The first part of our agenda is for the chairman's report. And I do want to bring up an issue that was raised by Sheila Pijam last meeting, two weeks ago, which is the ways in which Board of Selectmen handles correspondence on the town website and in our agenda. I had said that we would be discussing that tonight, and I want to let the public know that the board met last Saturday for a planning retreat workshop. This item was discussed extensively, and we're in the process of developing a policy for how correspondence is handled, so that it's clear to the public how that correspondence will be handled. We're not prepared with the policy yet tonight, and the goal is to have that available at our first meeting in September, which at this point is scheduled for, I think it's September 8th. It's an odd night because of holidays intervening, so that's where the communications, that's why the communications policy is not on tonight's agenda. And I'm open to any public input for other items that are not on the agenda tonight.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I would like to mention an item. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but you need to identify yourself by name and street address, please.
I'm Don Schwartz. My passcode is 986452.
No, passcode, a passcode is not a street address, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, 8 Ocean Street, Manchester.
Eight?
Ocean.
Ocean Street. Okay, thank you, Don.
So if it's appropriate, if it's, whenever it's appropriate, I'd like to just say something.
Is it something that's on the agenda tonight?
No, it's not on the agenda. It's about the dispatch regionalization to Middleton.
We're going to be taking that up in a public forum on, I believe it's September 13th, and I would prefer that you waited with your comments until then.
Is there no opportunity to give input prior to that? Because my understanding is a pretty definitive decision is going to be made around then, and I'd like to provide some input before that definitive decision.
It's a, it's a public forum, sir, and the public will have an opportunity to have their input that, that evening, and the decision will likely be done subsequent to the public forum in a regular board meeting in September.
All right, then, then I cannot have literally two minutes to make a statement on that now.
No, you cannot.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who have input on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we're going to move on to the agenda then. I need a motion to reopen the public hearing that was continued on August 2nd regarding the 30-inch oak tree at Memorial School and the 24-inch sugar maple at Sacred Heart Church.
Some of them.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Jake, seconded by Ms. Harrison. The first of those two that we'll take up is the tree at Memorial School. Now, my understanding is that there was a site visit that was done by Mr. Henderson, Tom Henderson, and the Manchester, Friends of Manchester Trees at the site with the architect and at least one other party, project manager party that was done on August 3rd. Subsequently, in conversation with Pam Bowden and Avi Urbis. Today, I talked to them, and Mr. Fettishfield talked to them on, I believe, last Friday. Yes, last Friday, and the issue of the sighting of the sign was discussed. There was no decision made, but the superintendent and Mr. Urbis, who's director of, not the director of facilities, but the, the director of this project from the administration of the school's point of view, both said that the sighting of the sign could be changed, that it would be referred back to, could be referred back to the school building committee. So if there's any further comment that would like to be made on that by members of the board, I see Ms. Bowden's here, if she'd like to make any further comment on this. We could come to a conclusion of this particular situation with this tree.
I would just say, Jeff, that I appreciate the time and effort that everyone has put into coming up with some creative solutions to citing the sign and the location, which we thought and still think is the original location for a memorial sign. It doesn't seem like we're going to get to a point where there's a solution that guarantees the, the life of the tree. So if the committee is just, is not comfortable with us proceeding in that location, we just need to know that. We respect it, and we will move on to finding alternate solutions.
Okay. Any comments from members of the board?
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, I, I support the idea of moving the sign to another location. Thank you.
Other board members, if you don't want to comment now, that's fine. We'll take some public comment as well.
Jeff, I'll, I'll, I'll comment now, and I'm, I'm certainly happy with another location. I think that the way it was left the last time we met was that, or, or maybe in one of the emails in between, that perhaps the committee was going to look at a smaller sign that still might be in a very, very close to the same location. I know that Mr. Henderson had said that if the sign is a bit smaller, it probably can work in that location so long as it doesn't interrupt the, the root system. And I'm open to looking at, at either, at either, either situation. Smaller sign, same location, or a different location, whatever the sign committee feels they want to pursue.
Okay.
I get, I think, Jeff, if it's okay, I think Dustin wants to comment on the implication of the signs and the size of the sign and perhaps what, what the impact may be on the tree, because I think there was some discussion that proceeding with installation of the sign would be done with the tree warden onsite with an onsite call in case we got into trouble. So I don't want to speak for Dustin. It looked like he was motioning to perhaps say something.
Okay, go ahead, Dustin.
Hi, everyone. Just Dustin Lombardi again, J C J, the project architect on this. We did meet onsite on the 3rd with Sue and Tom, and we reviewed the original plan, location of the sign, and the condition of the tree. We agreed to work to minimize the sign in its size, which we have been able to reduce by an overall dimension of two feet, shrinking each of the footings approximately a foot in size. So I think last time we were saying we had five-foot footings, where we're now down to a three-foot, eight-foot footing for each, for each pier of the sign. We also, still in the same location where the sign was shown at the previous meeting, but due to its smaller size, we were able to back it up from the roots of the tree system. So where we were showing the closest footing at the last meeting was about three feet off the tree. We're now, closest footing is about 12 feet off of the tree. So we do believe that we're going to be able to thread this sign in the location that's preferred, but still maintain the life of the tree. Tom had agreed that they would be out there essentially while we were digging to work with our contractor to tend to any small roots that may be in the way and help us cut and manage them in a, in a proper fashion rather than just a contractor out there doing a hack job to it. So with the, the help of Tom, as we move forward, we are planning to try to place this sign in a slightly better location than we showed last time, slightly smaller footprint that we do believe can be threaded without damaging the tree, but still accomplish putting a sign as close as possible to that main entrance rather than somewhere that wouldn't suit the needs of the town and the school committee. I do have that plan, if you would like me to show or share the new location of the tree or the reduced sign, but I don't have to share that if you don't wish to see it.
Hang on one sec. Okay, Dustin, I just, I just allowed you to share your screen, so go ahead.
So this is the plan that we showed. Well, this is the revised plan, but it's similar to what we showed. So if you remember from our last presentation, the sign was essentially in the exact location of the old existing sign, which you still see here in the plan, if you can see my mouse. By the reduction of the sign has allowed us to move it further back and closer to the plumbing, to the drainage pipes that we were concerned. And now with the smaller footprint, we can get closer to that PVC pipe. And that pulls this footing. Now, the start of the footing about 12 feet off the tree, the further part of the footing about 15 feet off the tree. So we feel that that distance alone with careful digging and root management, we are going to be able to basically ensure the, the sign will be maintained through at least the construction and installation. As you can see, this is the revised sign. Up here, you'll see the overall length is now 10 feet. When we brought it last time, it was 12 foot four. The pier length, pier sizes have also been diminished in size, but we still are accomplishing the overall aesthetic and appearance to match the high school signs that we were originally trying to match. So as you'll see from that, we, we have taken into consideration, you know, some of the comments and concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. And we did meet with Tom, like I noted out on the site, to really try to reduce the impact of the sign on that tree. And we are still going to try to plan to move forward with putting the sign in that location with the help of Tom being on site during the installation to mitigate any potential damages to that tree and its root system. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeff, if I may.
Anne?
Yeah, um, my recollection is that sometime in the past 25 years, a principal at the Memorial School redid the whole traffic flow and that the lower driveway has not always been the primary entrance. So I, I think the concern that it has to be near what is currently the primary entrance may be short sighted. But, but in fact, at some point, someone may design a different traffic flow, and then the sign will be at the exit. So.
We are changing the traffic flow as part of this project, and that is the main entrance because there's a bus loop and apparent drop-off loop that are being added to the project. But in order to pull into that bus loop, you have to pull off of this one spot from the street. It's the only way to get into the bus loop because the road is one direction. So this is the main entrance to the school as the traffic flow will be redesigned during this project, during our third phase of the project.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead.
Parking areas are pretty easy to redo, and I'm just saying, it has happened in the past. It may happen in the future. So I'm less concerned than most people about having the sign with, at one of the three entrances.
I understand Anne's perspective, and she's right. You know, once we're in the school for 10 years, who knows where, what will happen or what will cause the need to change the traffic flow. After listening to a lot of the conversation over the past couple of weeks, I think in terms of the Board of Selectmen, it really comes down to your comfortability level with us taking a chance on doing something that might put that tree in danger, because I think there's all, everyone is in agreement that we would take the utmost care and caution in installing the sign, but it does sound like there still may be a risk. And, you know, I, I find myself again at where we opened, which is if the risk to the tree is too great from the perspective of the Board of Selectmen, we will go back to SBC and discuss options for reciting the sign.
Okay. Any other board comments?
Jeff, can we get Tom Henderson's comments on his comfortableness with the updated, the placement of the, the updated placement of the sign and installation and the risk of the tree compared to the previous risk?
Tom?
Are you ready? Yeah, sure. 12 feet, if no digging were done within 12 feet of the trunk of the tree, that would naturally substantially increase, I'm sorry, decrease the probability of doing any harm to the root system. Of course, ideally, moving the sign well away where we didn't have to interfere with the roots at all is the optimal choice. But, yeah, yeah, I, I think 12 feet, if there's no digging done within 12 feet of the trunk of the tree, it will very substantially, I would like to say, increase the probability. Of course, when we start digging, we, what we, we never know exactly what we're going to encounter, and the only way you entirely eliminate the risk to the tree is to move it, you know, substantially away from the tree, you know, 50 feet away, as some people have suggested. Further up along Lincoln Street, heading to the, in the south, sort of the southeast direction up towards Summer in that area. But I really appreciate Dustin trying to find, give, give the tree a better chance of, of survival, and I appreciate all the community input that everybody has put in, but there's no guarantee to anything, you know, once you start digging in the vicinity, even in 12 feet. But it does increase the possibility of the tree having a nice, long life. And as I said, ideally, as far away from the tree is the ideal solution.
Any further board comment?
If I may, Jeff?
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, if, if the sign worked, I also wanted to add, but putting extra work into this, and yeah, I'm afraid of that.
The first part of what you said was not.
Still freezing?
It was freezing. Not now, though. So go ahead and repeat what you said.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank to Dustin and everybody for working to resize the sign. My question, if in fact, the sign is, is allowed to go on the site near the tree in a reduced, on a reduced scale, what type of equipment will be used? And will it be large equipment that will be on the roots or on, on an area that might affect the roots?
They plan to dig with a, with a mini excavator, so it's a, it's a medium-sized equipment. But we agreed, obviously, when we were with Tom, that he would be there to help position the equipment so that we don't damage any of the roots to the best of the ability and still be able to dig the hole. So the, the footing that's furthest away from the tree will be able to be dug from the road. So essentially not having any damage on there. And then we believe that the back footing can be dug from the driveway side of the tree without needing to go onto the grass area of the tree. There is a possibility that one or two branches may need to be pruned in order to stay on the road and not go on the grass, which Tom had said that he could help through the Friends of Manchester Trees to help prune back some of the branches, because there are some branches that need pruning on that tree just in general because of the health of them. And then there's a couple of low branches that would be either in the way of us digging, but also have some influence that are in the way of buses and other large vehicles pulling into the site. So there, there would be some minor pruning needed to stay fully off the roots. But we do believe that we can dig from a, a safe distance to not be right on the base of the roots, probably a good 15 to 20 feet away from the, the base of the tree.
Okay. Any other board comments? I'd like to get some public comment. And the young man whose tag is Shoshi Star had his hand up early on. So if you would like to unmute yourself and make a comment, go ahead.
For her.
I'm sorry.
Um, good evening, good, good evening, Bruce Sleckman. My name is Isaac Collins. I'm 10 years old. And I go to Manchester Memorial Elementary School. I've been studying trees, and I heard that there is a tree on the Memorial School property that may be harmed. There are two trees at the entrance of the driveway of the school. Without one, it wouldn't be as welcoming. I thought they could put the sign where the temporary sign is, so it wouldn't have to harm a beautiful 100-year oak tree. I'll leave you to think, and hopefully you'll realize that the life of a tree should never be less important than a sign. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much, Isaac. Any other public comment? Sandy.
Hi, thank you. Cindy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I know that there is overwhelming support based on communications this week regarding the oak tree to save it. I think that, you know, a sign is something man-made. It's something that we can control where it goes. And, you know, predetermining one place when there are so many other locations on the property where the sign can be visible is extremely important. I think it should be moved closer to, whether it be the tennis courts in a place that, you know, won't harm the drainage. There's a significant amount of space that's just inviting having a sign there that can be visible from both directions on Lincoln Street. And I think that, you know, even what I'm hearing tonight with some modifications, we're still risking the life of a 100-year-old tree. And, you know, anything beyond, you know, sort of digging by hand, you know, it, it's, it's very disturbing to think that the tree could be harmed. So just wanted to put in my two cents, and I think that if, if need be, and we need to create some other kind of solution, the town would rally, maybe do a GoFundMe to, to, you know, get new material that will be not, whether it not be so hard on the roots of the tree or just to develop something tastefully placed somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Go ahead.
Oh, hi, this is Steve Gang. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to Tom and the Friends of Manchester Trees for illuminating this issue, and especially to the Board of Selectmen for really chewing on it carefully. I'm, obviously, I have concerns about the trees, but I have a, a different question, which is what's the function of the slot, of the sign itself, and for whose information is it intended? So if it is to mark the entrance to the driveway, that's probably not needed for most people who are turning in the driveway, since they're well aware of where they're going. And I'm thinking of the people who drive past and say, what's this magnificent new building that the taxpayers have put all this money into? And it would be nice to have the sign, in fact, more prominent than, you know, up the driveway a bit. Just a thought. So if we consider who, who we're trying to inform with the sign, we might, in fact, embrace a different location than historically. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to clarify one, one thing about Steve's last comment about where the sign was historically and some comments that Justin made, Dustin made in our last meeting. The, the Memorial School sign was previously located right next to the building, next to the principal's office. It had two brick pillars, and it was an oval shape. Said Memorial School in gold on a field of white, and there was a strip along the, the brick underneath the sign that said, "Part of the Manchester Essex Regional School District." That's where the sign previously was. At the bottom of the driveway on the left-hand side, what was previously there was a spaghetti board that announced things like when summer stage was and what events were going on at the school. That was replaced when the building committee voted to, when the, when the decision was made to rebuild the building, and the building committee put up a sign saying "Home of the New Manchester Memorial School." So the building sign per se has never been in that location, at least in my 22 years in this town. Okay, let's keep going. Annie Cameron.
Hi, Annie Cameron. I live in Essex, but I'm chair, co-chair of the building committee. Essex is paying for this building as well, and they also come to this building, and so it's good for them to know where their tax dollars are going to and where they might be playing basketball one day. So not everybody who goes to the school is from Manchester.
I understand your comment, Dani, and just as, just as a comment to you and to others who see the sign as marking the driveway where the school is, that's just as easily accomplished with a small sign alongside the street that says Manchester Memorial School next right. It could be located just after the underpass, the overpass, and and alert people to the fact that they need to turn. It could be located further up towards Vine Street with a Manchester Memorial School 100 yards ahead. So it's, it's possible to do that and indicate where the driveway is. It can also be done in the other direction as well, coming off of Summer Street and coming up Lincoln Street. So it's not necessarily the case that the sign needs to identify the entrance to the school. Mr. Kelly? What do you need to unmute yourself? Good.
Hello?
Can you? Go for it. We can hear you.
Woody, Woody Kelly recently reappointed to the CPC and 291 Summer Street. I, I am not hearing that there's a significant relocation of the sign, and I think that under current conditions of this global climate change, that it's time that we made sure that trees like this are completely saved. And I intend to discuss with the CPC, I've, in our next meeting in a week, a much larger relationship between the CPC and the Manchester Friends of Trees for a significantly enlarged tree, tree planting program. And I would hope that were Tom Henderson to see that this slightly modified foundation system will not work, that the Board of Selectmen authorizes a relocation of the sign. Thank you very much.
Point of information, the Board of Selectmen cannot authorize a relocation of the sign. That's up to the school building committee and the Board of Selectmen can only express two things. One, that we're not going to allow the tree to be taken down. And two, that we prefer or strongly prefer, or whatever way we prefer, that the sign be moved elsewhere. Pam Bowden.
Thanks, Jeff. I was just going to reiterate that. I think there was a lot of design thought as to why the sign should be positioned where it was, history being one piece and we take your, your information back to the building committee. And really, this will get turned back over to the design team and they will work with the new parameters to come up with a a different set of options for us. So again, we really are just, we are very respectful of the committee and their position. And if there's not a level of comfort with the potential damage that could be done, we are positioned and ready to move forward and ask the design team to come up with new options for us.
Thank you, Pam. Any further public comment? Okay, I would like to add to this discussion that the Board of Selectmen has received multiple emails from residents of the town asking us not to remove the tree. And in this particular case, not one email that said, please remove the tree and put the sign there. All right. There are two trees in this hearing. If there's no further comment on the memorial tree, I want to move on to, we cannot vote on the memorial tree until we come out of hearing. So, Mary? If there's no further comments from the public on the memorial tree, then I would like to move to the Tree at Sacred Heart.
Jeff, can I make a comment on the memorial tree at this point?
Sure.
Okay, so I do see two prongs of this discussion. One is whether or not the board is supporting the tree and supporting removal of the tree or not supporting the tree. And I also see the, the fact that we, I understand the fact that we are simply rendering an opinion to the school committee as to whether or not the sign should be moved significantly elsewhere. And then I want to be careful that we're not getting too far into the business of trying to redesign this, the school building project. That's the, that's the business of the school building committee to, to sort out in the school committee. I want to echo the previous comments thanking the cooperation between the designer and the tree warden and staff for options for modifying the sign to fit it in with the, to the existing location and taking into account our concerns over the tree. I will make a comment about the risk to the tree. I've sat in a number of tree hearings where Tom Henderson has discussed risk to trees from construction. When new foundations were getting put in close to trees and he has warned us that they, when we did not want to remove the tree and we had the construction people work quote unquote carefully with the tree warden to try to avoid damage to the tree, he would warn us when he thought that that was unlikely to come out well. And he was usually right. So when he says the empathy is given to me tonight tends to make me think that the modified proposal for smaller footings removed further away from the tree would be a viable option for us. That's based on my hearing him speak over the years on a number of other tree hearings. So I think that's all I want to say right now.
Hey, thank you, Eli. I'm going to close discussion unless.
Jeff? Can I make one quick comment? Peter Manassia in Five Wood Home Road?
Yes, Peter.
Thank you, Jeff. The only thing I would say is why would we risk this tree when there is so much real estate where that tree can go? This tree has a twin across, across the way from it. They both stand to, they both stand to inform a beautiful design. So I just want to say, there's no reason why we should put any risk on that tree when there's so many, it's on so much other places that that, that sign can go. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. I am now going to close comments on the Memorial School tree and and have I don't know whether Greg or Eli should make a comment on the Sacred Heart tree.
Well, maybe both. Who do you want to go first?
You're up, Eli.
All right, so I talked to Reese McIntyre at the Sacred Heart Church and asked what the opinion of various different church staff and, and relevant players of the church were with regard to the tree. So that was the subject of the tree here in the twenty-four inch Sugar Maple. She said that they thought, she said that she thought that they would want the tree to come down, that they had been concerned over the years about falling branches of it in wedding parties. She went and talked to various different staff there and called me back and confirmed that that was the opinion or kind of the request from the staff there that they would be fine with that tree coming down. And really, that's about it.
Greg?
So we did receive communication from Father Paul, who indicated that yes, indeed, that he and the parish would, would support the tree being removed. He did request that it be that the stump be ground down upon removal and that when, when the removal takes place, that it's coordinated with the church so that it's not conflicting with an event at the church.
Okay, so the continuation of the tree hearing for that particular tree at Sacred Heart was done at Mr. Balling's request to get some input from Sacred Heart. And I think we've accomplished that. Are there any comments from the board?
So originally, I was thinking that, you know, it was my opinion that we should try and prune it. And we, when we talked to Tom Henderson, it was, he felt that with pruning this tree couldn't be made to last longer. My opinion shifted somewhat, given the fairly specific comments from the church about their concerns in the past and then for the future. I think that they would support a new tree being planted to replace that one. And while I'm, I do think that we could probably preserve it some more. I'm sensitive now to the request of the church.
Okay. I'm not going to, moving this along, I'd like to request a motion to close the tree hearing.
Some of second.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Jakes and seconded by Mr. Brown. We have two different trees that we're about to vote on, and this is specifically for the removal of the trees. So let's start with Sacred Heart. I'd like to get a motion that the tree that has been noticed. That is with a notice on it. At Sacred Heart to the right side of the walkway going into, into the church be removed.
I'll make a motion that we remove the twenty-four inch Sugar Maple at Sacred Heart Church.
Okay, so I see your second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Harrison. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Bowler.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
We can, we can lip read, Anne.
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Jakes.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Bob Matron, a vote yes. So that tree passes four to one. And the request for the removal of the tree at Memorial School, the third, what's listed is the thirty inch oak on the left side of the driveway going in. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we deny it for the age of Memorial School.
The motion is to deny, the second is, is who?
Becky.
Becky, okay. The motion is to deny the removal of that tree. And okay, let's, let's just keep it at that. Roll call vote. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling.
Yes.
Ms. Bob Matron, a vote yes. Based on the feedback that we've had Pam Bowden and Avi Urbis asked for direction on this. Based on the feedback that we've had from town, people who have spoken tonight, the emails that we've received and and other input. Any consideration that you can give to relocating that sign would be encouraged. We don't have a foot, we don't have a foot in this game. This is your your choice, your decision, but that's the input that we've had tonight as well as in emails. That anything that endangers that tree, particularly given its age. We would like to see it avoided. So I'm going to stop there and it's up to the school to make a decision on the school building committee to make a decision about whether to proceed with the modified plan or not. If the modified plan is observed, there is an aspect to the memo that was sent to us by Dustin said that if it looked like there was damage to the roots in the process of setting the footings that required the removal of the tree, that Mr. Henderson could make that decision on site. That's actually not the case unless it's an emergency and the tree is in imminent danger of collapse. That would have to come back before the Board of Selectmen. Okay, so that closes our discussion of tree, the trees in the tree hearing. We have two interviews tonight. One is for the Could you please mute yourself? Could you please mute yourself? The next item on the agenda is the board and committee interviews, starting with Jennifer De Simone for Council on Aging. Jennifer, we apologize for your not getting your opportunity to be interviewed last, last time. And for the delay tonight because we were supposed to do this item twenty minutes ago. So thank you for your patience.
Well, that's fine. Thank you for having me. Learned a lot. I'm, I'm voting for the royal tree as well. So I know I missed the vote.
Could you tell us a little bit about your interest in working on Committee for the Council of Aging?
Sure. So I moved to Manchester in December of this, actually, last year. And I am finishing up my masters in gerontology, UMass Boston at the end of the summer. I, I currently work actually for the state and I'm not in gerontology field, but I don't plan on going into it full-time. It was something I became interested in after taking care of both my parents at the end of their lives. And I just thought, and advocating, I like to advocate for people and I do it in my current job for the state. I saw the Council on Aging needed some volunteers. I thought I would put my name on it. See if you were interested. That's my background. My parents and my grandparents actually both, they grew up in town here and I was able to worm my way in this during the pandemic. So I feel very fortunate and then I, I like to volunteer and help out and I'd love to be part of this and I kind of, a way to get to know more people in the town. And as I said earlier, I, I'm a, I'm a strong advocate. I work as an advocate at the Department of Revenue in town as one of the advocates. I'm in the Problem Resolution Office and I work directly for the advocate. So I'm, it's kind of my background and I just thought this might be a good fit, especially given that I've just spent two years studying in gerontology and aging services. So just a little bit more about me.
Board members have any questions?
I may, Eli, Jeff?
Oh, Becky. Yes, go ahead, Becky.
That muscle memory thing. First of all, Jen, your qualifications sound wonderful and thank you so much for offering this up. Do you, have you, have you had an opportunity to speak with anyone in Council on Aging? In terms of what might?
Sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I haven't. I did email Nancy Hammond when I was first moved in and asked if I could at some point maybe volunteer or do something. You know, it wasn't the best time or the timing in December. And so I haven't actually spoken to anyone directly, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was going to say I've been in contact. I mean, I've been on their website, Senior Care. I've read UMass Boston actually did a whole, looks like an audit of the town for walkability and livability as, as we get older. And I read that through and, and it was actually not only at Manchester but Cape Ann. So I looked, I kind of have a lot of the background there from their audit that they did a couple of years back.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Jeff, if I may?
John, go ahead.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much for volunteering, Jennifer. I'm, I'm not surprised that there are academic programs that focus on gerontology. Everybody's the population is getting a little bit older and the fact that you're pursuing that certainly supports that you have an interest in this. And I'm curious, so you're going to take maybe perhaps a little bit of an academic approach to this because you've been dealing with a lot of courses that have specifically addressed this issue. you've been dealing with a lot of courses that have specifically addressed this issue. Anything in particular that is a hot button for you as you, as you read through what the Council on Aging is doing here in town and ideas that perhaps have percolated up from your academic pursuits?
Actually, everything I've seen is part, you know, how they rolled out the COVID vaccine. They got those out to the older citizens pretty well. It looked like Nancy did a great job with that. And as far as meat, so I can also say in January I had knee surgery. So I pretty, I learned pretty quickly how the sidewalks are in town and I, you know, they're fine for me at this age now with a, with a good knee, but I thought if they're not, you know, there's some things like that I've looked at and access to the, the stores in the town, you know, walkability and just getting around in the center and the signs placed in the middle of some of the sidewalks, maybe just things like that. And I, it sounds like they're looking at addressing some of that, but those would be probably what I'd be, you know, mostly weighing in on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My turn.
Eli, go ahead.
Jennifer, you said you went through some of this work when you were taking care of your parents. When you were looking for local resources to help with care for your parents. Did you find that easy to do? What do, did you, were you helped by the work you were doing in your master's program and the work you were doing with the state? Or did you have to work through that on your own?
On my own. Sorry.
What's that on your?
I don't think you were done with your question. I'm sorry.
Well, I was basically done with it. You, you got the gist of it.
That's why I decided to study, to look into this because I have a lot of friends who have parents that are aging now and I sort of, I never prepared for this. So I didn't, my parents weren't in Manchester when they were ill. So we weren't, it wasn't like there were no resources here. I was in another part of the state, but doing this all on my own and kind of as it, you just, you don't get time to think. Sometimes you have to make quick decisions and I just thought, I, you know, I, I have friends now that reach out to me all the time for advice on, you know, what are the options? And so I just thought I'm just going to learn more for myself and for friends and I was able to do that nights while working. So it's just really, if people ask, am I going to leave my job? No, I have no interest leaving my job. I love to volunteer it, you know, whether it's here or in person, you know, in homes and long-term care facilities. If something just even, you know, just to do something with what I've learned, but if it, otherwise I'm not looking for a new career. So.
Yeah, it's surprising how hard it is to find and understand what those resources actually are and what it can and can't do for you, isn't it?
That's what I found. Yes.
Yeah. All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
And did you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I think the answer, the, the previous questions have covered everything I'm interested in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank, thank you, Jennifer, for, for volunteering.
Thank you.
Our typical process has been to volunteer, to interview volunteers for various committees and then wait two weeks before we affirm them. Is there any objection on the part of the board to going ahead and affirming Jennifer's application for the Council of Aging tonight?
I think that's a great idea.
Good. So I need a motion.
This three-year term?
I'm sorry?
Is this a three-year term, Jeff?
It's a three-year term.
Make a motion to appoint Jennifer De Simone for a three-year term to the Council of Aging. Ending 22, 3, 4, June of 2024.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Podmer Turner votes yes. Congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you for bringing your expertise. And it's a rare individual who will go out and get a master's degree based on your experience in gerontology without wanting to go into the field itself. So I, I congratulate you on, on your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
So you should get in touch with with Town Hall so that you can get sworn into that committee. Our next applicant is Ashley Oaks, who is applying for an opening on the Conservation Commission. We have one other applicant for this position whom we interviewed two sessions ago now. So we may need to put this off until we have an opportunity to digest things and not go and vote tonight. But let's, let's go ahead and say hello to Ashley. Ashley, could you please tell us a little bit about you're interested in the Conservation Commission, your understanding of what they do and your background as it applies to this position?
Okay, um, I will, but first, is my video okay? I'm not sure I'm over a cell phone connection.
Your video is fine. Your audio could come up a little bit if you can.
If I turn my video off, I think the audio will improve. Is that okay? Well, if you're frustrated, just ask me to turn the video off. How's that?
Okay, if we reach that frustration point, I will ask you to do it.
Okay. So, um, I guess it, over the past few months, I've learned a lot about the Wetlands Protection Act and the DEP drinking water regulations and Manchester green infrastructure specifically. And one thing that struck me about the drinking water and climate change is we really need to be proactive in thinking about how to manage our resources as a town. It seems like the state regulations protect existing supplies, but don't allow for much protection of more broadly, the, the potential future supplies and wetland zones outside of the already zoned one and two areas. So I would love to join this group and think proactively about managing future water supplies. I also have learned a lot about our Sawmill Brook and its importance to trout and also that there is potential to have it upgraded so that it gets greater protections in the eyes of the DEP, different sections of it. There are some groups who are interested in, in this and are working on it. The MECT, and I've also spoken with Scott Worsley. And he's the fellow who worked with the town about 30 years ago and did the original zoning of town. It sounds like he thought it would be worth us revisiting some of these zones, and I would love to be able to be a part of that. I was excited to hear about the trees on this call and the potential for many more trees coming up in the way that we protect the trees in town. And I did have the opportunity to sit in on a few of the COMCOM calls in the past. And it's just interesting work. I'm looking for something that's part-time in nature to meet more people in town, just get more engaged and be distracted from my children. I have four kids at home and it would be great to be a part of the work that you all do in town.
All right, any board member questions, please?
Yeah. So Ashley, I'm, I'm obviously pretty familiar with your, your bandwidth and your research capabilities. So I, I under, I know full well that you're capable of handling the technical aspects of what's required on the COMCOM. Question though, you're currently listed as Director and Treasurer of SEMA. And we don't know where the SLV 40B is going to land right now. It may come back through mass housing and come for the zoning board and at some point they may end up in front of COMCOM related to that project. We don't know. Question is, given your past position and current position on SEMA and involvement there, would you be expecting to recuse yourself from operations involving that project if it came before COMCOM?
So first, if I took the COMCOM role, I think it would be appropriate for me to step down from the SEMA role. As treasurer, it would also save me from having to figure out the taxes. So that would be great. But I don't know, and I guess I would defer to the expertise of the Board of Selectmen. If I were to step down from my role on SEMA, would I be able to be a full part of the COMCOM were SLV to come up? Or would I need to recuse myself? I would defer to legal opinion on that. I, I don't know what would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
It's an interesting consideration, Ashley, and we might talk about that with Town Council, but for the most part, recusal would be if there was immediate cause for conflict of interest. We can, we could talk about that further if you're appointed to the COMCOM.
Sounds great.
Any other questions from board members? I'm trying to move this along, give Ashley a good shake, but move this along as quickly as possible so we can try and catch up.
If I may, Jeff?
Yes.
Um, hi, Ashley. Thank you very much. Do you, if you have four children at home, will you, do you have any time constraints or, or issues that might prevent you from evening meetings or sidewalks?
So, great question. And I, I spoke with the chairman of the commission and he directed me to one of the former members who was a mother of children about the same age. And so I was able to speak with her and talk about the commitment and it sounds exciting. She said it was a great distraction. She said it was very doable. And I think at the time when she served, it was every two weeks. Now it's three weeks. And so it would just be a matter of an occasional babysitter or my husband watching the kids. So I, I, I did run down those questions. Those are very valid questions and I feel comfortable that it will be okay.
And I have one other question, and this is regarding the decision-making as it relates to COMCOM. And COMCOM, you are following pretty specific guidelines, bylaws. And sometimes i- it does come down to decisions that make some people unhappy. And it's not always easy to do, but is that something you'd be comfortable with?
I would be comfortable with it, I think, as long as you hear all sides, invite expert opinion as necessary and make a balanced opinion based on all of the facts. I think you can handle anything that comes at you from people's opinions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick question, if I may, Jeff. Of Ashley and good. Ashley, and that, thanks for volunteering. You obviously have some volunteering in your blood with your activities on SEMA. I'm sure and certain you've done other things in your past. You're obviously a very organized person. At 7:30 at night, you've got four kids at home and you're here with us. So you're managing your life pretty well. You said that one of your hot buttons was future water supply. And so that is something I think you'll, you'll probably be proactive in pursuing as, as part, part of this group. And I, I did appreciate the fact that you had reached out to some of the current and former members of the Conservation Committee. Was there any particular topic that they brought up that you also looked and said, yeah, I'd like to kind of push this along as well? What do you think is a, a key challenge for Conservation?
The things that excited me the most were thinking about the water supply, the watershed as a whole. And the potential to maybe revisit some of the old studies that were done. The trees and the potential to really make a difference with the look and feel of the town and the heat radiating off of the roads when you walk your dogs. I have two dogs. And also I learned a lot about the eel brass and I have no experience with that, but I'm excited to learn more and work on anything that can help the harbor as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And any questions or comments?
Um, my question is really more for you, Jeff, or I am concerned that if I would like to know what the, our, our the town's, town council's opinion is on the necessity of Ashley recusing herself if the SLV project comes before them. I, I hate to see a situation where we're, we're tying our, a hand behind our back in a discussion if, if she can't be allowed to talk there. I, so I, I, I'm asking only that we delay the decision for two weeks so that we can get that information. She seems like a wonderfully qualified candidate. Certainly has been very active and very good at parroting out information, very valuable information. I just, I just would want to know what we would be facing if, if SLV were to claim that there was a conflict.
Greg, could we pursue that with Town Council?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, happy to.
Okay. All right. So I, if there's no further questions, then I'm going to say thank you very much for stepping forward, Ashley. Our next scheduled meeting. I want to make sure I got this right now because I've said it once and I'm not sure that I said it correctly.
It's September, September.
It is September. Thank you, which is an odd day because of holidays. And the board will render the decision on your appointment at that time.
So just to clarify, sorry, September 8th is Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the pump track. Looking for my notes. Give me one second. Okay, so we had a discussion regarding the pump track on like a second, excuse me, July 22nd. And following which I was contacted by Parks and Rec and they raised a number of concerns about how this decision was reached and some factors that were not taken into consideration and making the decision from their point of view. And those items included an approval without notification for the committee to attend the meeting. A conflict with the Park and Recreation Master Plan document that was previously approved by the Board of Selectmen. Two previous denials of the project by the Parks and Rec based upon research that recommended denial. A lack of a parking plan for out of town users. Lack of clarity on the responsibility for dealing with nuisance compliance regards to noise, trash and parking. The impact of, as they said, fallout from any nuisance complaints on their obtaining budgetary approval for a more permanent use of the land as a dedicated youth sports practice field. The timeline of their progress towards a budget request for the practice field. The staging of the practice field process in the scheme of Sweeney's, Sweeney Field renovation and project planning that was underway for Sweeney Field to be renovated. In particular, it came up in the course of the meeting that their intent was to have the practice field in place before they started to build at Sweeney. So that they would have a place to hold games and other things that were scheduled for the Sweeney, that would have been scheduled on Sweeney Fields that was unavailable due to construction. So those are very significant issues and having had that conversation, I went ahead and contacted Max Warner and said to him, I want you to hold off on any construction or materials purchase until we had an opportunity to discuss this project again. In our last meeting, we had an emphasis on the temporary nature of the pump track in this particular area. Based on the fact that the land had not been reused since the buildings were removed and the soils were judged to be too contaminated for, for the building. So that's where we are. And I've had some back and forth with Max Warner by email regarding this. He has some concerns about the mountain biking community not being recognized in Manchester for the needs that they have for areas to practice their sport legally. And that he saw the pump track temporarily going into this area as he did not see that there was going to be any use of that area from his point of view for two or three years. What's happened in terms of the Park and Rec committees proposals to me was that they were going to propose a site study for construction documents. And the town budget for this year. And that they would like to see the construction of the project occur as soon as possible. So if there's any questions or comments that people would like to make on what I just said, I know it was a mouthful, I can put up on my screen the particular points, if you want them, that I just made that were part of the Parks and Rec discussion on July 29th. And we can take a look at the decisions that were made at our August 2nd here.
Jeff, if I may?
Go ahead, Becky.
First of all, and just, just a point of clarification, it's Max Warnock. Just so that in the minutes, we get the name correct.
Did I say something different, Becky?
Warner.
Oh, I swallowed my CK. I apologize.
Just don't let it happen again.
I won't let it happen again. Thank you for your correction.
Mostly just for Gail there. I guess I, I, I find this pretty frustrating in that Cheryl and I, Marshall, head of Parks and Rec, exchanged emails back in April about, about this, which I also then forwarded on to the board. And I'm not in any way trying to point a finger at Cheryl. Please don't, don't, that's not what I'm doing here. My, my concern is we've had a piece of property that has had a proposed use for some time by Max Warnock. And the town has not been pursuing the use of this, including at the time when I received the email back in April. I, I agree. It's, I think it's, I don't think it's right that we don't address the various needs of different groups. And they're talking about putting up a temporary pump track. And, and as far as litter and noise and nuisances, I, I don't see how there'd be any more from this seasonal use and a temporary track as opposed to full-time, full-on athletic fields. And if parking's an issue, if somebody brought up parking being a concern, how would the few users of a pump track cause more problems than athletic fields and the needs for parking as well as people parking perhaps across the street and then children trying to cross the street? I think there are a lot of ifs involved with going forward with that as an athletic field. And
Becky, could?
I'm almost done. To disallow the use of a pump track on a temporary basis at this point because there hopes to be a study done later this year. I just don't think that is right. Thank you.
Okay, I want to correct two things that you said. One is that the Board of Selectmen approved the master plan for athletic fields in October of 2020. And in that master plan, there was a schematic of the practice field that is proposed for this burned up area. And there are parking spaces that are integrated into that plan. And we approved that last October. So the, the issue of on-street parking for this particular facility is certainly mitigated by by the parking spaces that are allowed, allotted in the master plan for athletic fields that we reviewed and approved. The second issue is that the Parks and Recreation Committee brought to my attention was that they did, they were under the impression that the field was not yet available for them to continue with their plans. That would have been clarified had they been invited to the meeting that we had on August 2nd. And we did not invite them and we should have. And I take responsibility for that. They should have been notified that this meeting was coming up and that they had an interest in it. It's like notifying in a butter or notifying other town committees that have an interest in a particular decision that this board is about to make. So there is also an issue that was raised during the meeting that I didn't put on the list. That this would be the only facility like this, this pump track. Perhaps in Essex County. We have no way of regulating who comes to use it. Max has always said, oh, you know, anybody who was going to come to use it would just bike there. Well, they're coming from out of town. So there is an issue, legitimate issue related to parking that we did not vet. That's based on scarcity of the facility. So those three areas I wanted to respond to in terms of what you're saying. Understand the points that you're making. I understand the frustration. But I also think that we need to be considerate of other committees and the work that they do.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I agree. And the information and clarification is very helpful. Thank you.
May I make a comment, Jeff?
Go ahead, Eli.
So at the previous meeting, I expressed some reluctance or some concern around the issue of the fact that this was being built on top of a cap which didn't have an impermeable membrane under it to the all burned up hazardous material. And my concern around that at the time had to do with temporary, yes, but sometimes things that are temporary become less temporary or their temporariness is not measured in one year, two years, it's three years, four years, five years. We don't know how that will play out. My concern is around really who is going to have the responsibility for managing that. And the fact that this was proposed as a project that was intended to be distributed, essentially have distributed management. Nobody actually in response, holding the responsibility for the actual project after it was built. And that was my concern when this originally came up before the board a couple of years ago. And at that time, we, we tried to give it a home with Parks and Rec. And at that time, Parks and Rec said, no, they didn't want to take it for a variety of different reasons. And that's why we didn't move it forward last time. And I feel like I'm in the, I feel, I feel like I'm, I have the same opinion now that I think the project really should have an owner within the town if it's going to be sitting on town land. And I think that's one of the places where we fell down a little bit last time. So I still have that concern. I still think that I should have an owner if, if we were to move forward.
Jeff, I've got a question or two. Mostly on the timeline and I'm trying to, I'm not sure who is present, who might be able to speak to that. When we chatted about this program two weeks ago, or whenever it was, I guess it was early August. It was two or three years and it's not clear to me what that timeline is, given the Parks and Rec's plans with regard to doing a study, getting some money appropriated. And is, is the timeline changed much at all and from a practical perspective? And who would, would be able to address that?
I'm looking.
Can you hear me?
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Coyne. I live on Three Crooked Lane. And I am a member of the Park and Rec Committee.
Thanks. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so I'm happy to address it. And I thank the board for kind of clarifying some of the concerns we had, which were, and first and foremost, you know, this isn't any type of knock on Max in the pump track. When Max came in to the board in, I think, 2018 and we voted on it again in 2019, the general consensus was, you know, it, it was a well-thought-out presentation. And if we just had an abundance of land, it would be a great idea. Unfortunately, you know, having been on this board for many years and being involved in youth sports in this town for decades, we just don't have an abundance of land. So the thought process at the time was, you know, for the greater good, that land should be used for more of an all-purpose field. So that's why in 2019, our recommendation to the selectmen was to not go ahead with the pump track. But at the same time, we did do the master study. We have had consultants come in and advise us, and we do have schematics drawn up for that field. What we didn't, and what we were not aware of was when we could actually use that field. So the first that we heard that you could use the field is when we found out that the board had granted temporary use for the pump track. We were just under the assumption that the waiting time was, is still going on. So the short answer is we do have a playbook for that field. We've had it worked out with the folks the town hired to do the master plant. We have schematics drawn up, which does include parking. It is, you know, as far as the supervision is concerned in San Francisco, how is it different than any other field? I can tell you from running Little League, when we sign on to use Sweeney Park or Mascanomo or Field of Dreams in Essex, we take full responsibility for that field, for its upkeep, for the maintenance, for its appearance, et cetera. So if Sweeney Park, for example, had a bunch of trash in center field or the park just looking disarrayed, Cheryl would call me right away and say what's going on down there and it'd be our responsibility to pick it up. What happens here is there isn't really no oversight. There isn't a committee that we're aware of that's formed. And so, you know, as far as the timeline and getting to that question, we're ready to, to move forward with this. We just weren't aware that we are able to go for.
So there are, there are a number of, and I'm not sure of all of the, all of the various specific points in, in the advancement of this. I know that monies have to be appropriated for this field. And there was something about a study. Ideally, a shovel would be put in the ground in when? In two years or a year and a half or?
I can't speak for that. I, I don't know that. I know that our goal was to go for funds before CPA later on this week. And the money was to be, I believe, on the town meeting. But I mean, our, I mean, we have everything ready to go. And I don't know if it is six months from now or down the road. But, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, it should be sooner than later.
Well, that sounds like within a year. Assuming monies are voted at the town meeting and then July 1, things can move.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, you're, you're asking the wrong person that question. I don't have control over, you know, when, when the town frees up money. I mean, that's just out of my purview. But as far as having a plan and knowing what we thought, given the surveys that were handed out and the best use of that spot, we're, I mean, we're shovel-ready, so to speak. We, we just don't know we had the access or we didn't have, you know, even know to begin to ask for funds.
John, I could, and Jeff, if you want me, I can jump in a little bit here.
All right, Greg.
So if, if, if indeed you wanted to try to move it forward as quickly as possible, you, you could appropriate dollars at a fall town meeting to do the design work and cost estimation. That could be ready, you know, in, in the winter in time for preparing the capital request for the annual town meeting in April. And if that were to be approved, you, you could be under construction. And if that were to be approved, you you could be under construction. Towards the end of the summer. And that's not out of the question. That's a fairly aggressive timeline, but it's not out of the question.
Thanks, Greg. This is Cheryl. Can I step in for a second?
Go ahead.
Thanks. So we have Weston and Sampson already on there, working on. The Sweeney Park project. So we have also now put to them to please give us an estimate for the engineering. For Pine Street. Which, you know, obviously, it, so shovel ready might be a little anxious, well, not exactly shovel ready. But as Greg said, we're looking at a year because, you know, there's a little more. Information that they're going to have to get for the, any remediation related to that site or whatnot. But what we have, where we're getting ready now, is the estimate for what the engineering will cost, and that should be ready for the fall town meeting. Like Greg said, to then have that on the fall town meeting to then start that study to hopefully have finished for spring town meeting. To then have the project finished. And that. We're kind of. We have the the Sweeney project, and this is kind of the precursor to the Sweeney project, so that when. Things, when that field is shut down, we have some place to put the teams that had displaced during that construction time. So it's how we originally wanted the plan to go, but didn't want to hold up the Sweeney project. Waiting for Pine Street, so we moved ahead with the Sweeney project, so now. This will kind of be ahead of the Sweeney and all kind of part of the bigger picture that's in that athletic field master plan.
Jeff, if I may. I've heard that this proposed field described as a practice field. And now it's saying, it seems as if it's going to be a real. Fully developed field that we can use as an alternative to Sweeney. Is the area big enough to support that? Is, are the plans that are, have been laid out intended as a small, as a practice field? I've heard it. You know, little kids soccer. What is in fact the plan?
It is for a. Oh, sorry. It is for a smaller practice type field, so it wouldn't. It wouldn't be taking on any full sided soccer games. It wouldn't even be the size of a full sided field, but. That is a lot of what happens in the outfield of that Sweeney Park is the soccer practices. So the multi use field would be soccer, lacrosse, flag football. But it is intended to, for the most part, be a small sided practice field. It could potentially be used for smaller. You know, younger kids soccer or or something like that as well, but mostly as a practice field.
So in fact, it's not a suitable replacement for Sweeney. You'd have to schedule other things, other places.
Correct, correct. It's just to kind of take a little of that pressure off when Sweeney's offline.
And Jeff, my my other. Point is, is that the schedule that's been discussed is. Ambitious. Particularly when I look at other projects that the town has taken on. You know, not to name names, but the town common took a bit longer. So I I have a feeling that 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 if we look at this and say, oh, yeah, they'll be ready, they'll be ready to start. Breaking ground and doing the remediation in July of of 22. I I think that's. Really ambitious.
Okay, and you slowed down a little bit at the end there, but I think we got it, that you think that it's an ambitious. Timeframe to be working in.
I guess I would be rude and say. Improbable.
Okay.
It's it's what we're we're aiming for. That's all I could say. I honestly, obviously can't promise anything. But that's the goal.
And and Jeff. Who who owns the Dexter Pond area? Who's responsible for that? That is used for town recreation.
I I don't think that's a fair comparison at all. And there's there's people who skate there every once in a while, but. It's not the the sheer number of people that would be using. Our our practice field. And that is kind of out of the way and not right on. That, and this is a natural area. This is a, it's a, you know, a field. So I think comparing Dexter to, you know, this site is really not accurate.
Dexterian has about four parking spaces. I believe that the schematic for this field has about. Fifteen to eighteen parking spaces.
Right, and nobody. Nobody, I'm I'm not, I'm comparing it not to the practice field, but to. The use as a temporary use, interim, intermediate use as. The pump track and I'm. It's nice that there are parking spaces at Dexter because almost nobody skates to a skating rink, to a skating pond. And I I agree with Max that that most people. Would. Um, in fact, ruckles to go practice on on the pump track.
Okay.
So just to answer the question about Dexter, it it is town owned, it's under the Conservation Commission. It's one of the properties that they. That they manage.
I think it's important to underscore that. Parks and Recreation did. In the process of building the master plan that they were working on. Did a townwide survey for field, fields, field needs. And. Some of the field needs that Cheryl Marshall was just talking about for. Practicing soccer, lacrosse. Flag football. Came up in the course of their survey and. While Max has been articulate about the mountain biking community. There was no mention of the mountain biking, of mountain biking as a need in that survey. Now, that can be said that that particular. Community is not going to be reached by such a survey. But there's also the question about. The mountain biking community in Manchester as opposed to the broader mo- mountain biking community. In the Cape Ann area or the North Shore or Essex County. And I think we lost you.
I think I may be back.
Oh, there you are.
Yep, yeah. Yeah. I I think when we discussed, discussed this last. Meeting. Our understand, our. Direction was that if it became a nuisance, it would be closed.
But in all due respect, what our concern is on the committee is. And if something did happen and it it did become a nuisance, is it going to make it that much more difficult with the abutters? To come up with a more permanent use of that field? And, you know, I I think it is truly a concern of ours that there is no organization modern than this. I mean, who is going to, you know, look out after the track? Who's going to make sure it's not being misused? It's easy access right off the highways. I mean, it any, there's a lot of shenanigans could go on there. And there's no real oversight for the field, the risk of. Something going wrong there, and then that impeding what is part of our master plan, I think is something that has to be considered.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
I'm just, I'm a little concerned about how the back and forth is going on this. The way that. It seems like discussion between other board members and some of these board members when. And correct me if I'm wrong, but but. Comments should really be going to and through you. And I I I I just. I'm a little concerned about that and. And if I may, regarding the last comment. I I I think it could also, you could put a spin on that and say that, well, yeah, maybe this is a trial run. And if it is a problem, then maybe we don't do fields there. So we can be looking at this different ways. I'm not going to suggest that that it be viewed that way. But I'm just saying it could be looked at that way as well. And to be fair, Parks and Rec did not have the opportunity to hear the discussion we did have, including those questions last time. So should we? Never mind. All gone. It went away, whatever my finishing thought was. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any other questions or comments from the board? Or needs that they would like to have addressed by either Cheryl Marshall or. Michael from the Parks and Rec Committee? Okay, the one party that we haven't heard from who I know is on the line is Max. Max, would you like to make any comments about this?
Yes, I would. Thank you for the consideration and time of everyone. I just wanted to say if had, I know last time we discussed it needing an owner, could possibly needing an owner. That could become an issue, and if it does, I can speak with bike and pedestrian, who I know at least some board members who I have spoken with are backing it. So if someone needs to take responsibility, that is someone. I would also like to state that. Again, that's an optimistic timeline for the other one. Right now, I have purchasing lined up with local places to get dirt, get stuff moved in. I have a list of people I can contact of, I believe, over 800 people. To contact about putting it in. So. Once I get materials, which would take maximum of a week. And workers which I'd planned on putting it in on the fall, it would be fast moving and obviously could be temporary. So even if it goes through the spring and they come in in the summer with their optimistic plan, they could get it through. That was one of the big things. Again, usage is, I understand that people coming in from other towns. I spoke with the chief of police. He said people can park along the side of the road. That is legal. It's not. Just resident parking. So yes, there could be people coming in from other towns. I cannot guarantee. But I also have been on a group with people like someone in Beverly trying to put in a pump track there. So I think others aren't far behind if this does go in. So if it does get used, other places will probably go in as well. And that usage would be spread out over others. Can be shut down if it needs to, and I believe there is usage in town and saying it. Has a lesser amount of usage versus a field is true, but there are things like baseball fields which only pertain to one group of people. So, yes, I understand that. Those are the big things I wanted to say, I guess. Thank you. And if there are alternative sites, I would be happy to hear them.
Max. You've been. Very diligent. Over several years now. Working with and. Learning about the slow grinding of. Changes in town administration or, excuse me, town politics. My understanding is that you're leaving to go to school. In the next few weeks. Who do we talk to about this after you're gone?
You and my father, Ken Warnock, and I have spoken with others in town like Val Hopkins. About keeping it going once I'm gone, like Val Hopkins, Terry Cowan. And between my dad and my little brother, my dad's going to have someone to keep it going.
And when you say that there are, I think you said 800 people. How many of those people are residents in Manchester by the state?
I I do not know how many of those are residents. I at least have the signatures from in town of at least. I believe 50 to 100.
And you have presented those signatures and that level of interest from people in town to Parks and Rec?
Yes, I collected those signatures in 2018 and presented them to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay, I'm I'm. At this point, in a dilemma about the way to proceed. You know, I hear strong arguments on both sides for going forward or not going forward. I hear that Parks and Rec. Could have. Construction drawings. After town meeting if it were passed. And. That that if the monies were passed, that they could get construction drawings after the town meeting. That would be in place before the annual town meeting. And that they could start construction next summer.
May I speak for a second?
Just hang on a second. Our emphasis on on this has been temporary all along. And my concern is to re allow. Going forward to build something. Where temporary may be. A need for construction to start sometime during the summer next summer. Go ahead.
If this makes it easier for you guys, I'm happy if you, if I withdraw the plans and you guys can get me to a group. That can be the backing and someone to represent it that can help me find another site to use as a pump track.
Do you have any ideas about that? Because. Long ago, I had some experience with finding fields space in. Manchester and. I know that Mike has worked for years trying to find field space in Manchester. It's.
I can work.
It's not, it's not a readily available qual- quantity. Or readily available kind of space. So do you have any ideas for an alternative like location?
I can do it in the woods. Open space and recreation might have sites, and I'm trying to find, I believe, a couple of years ago, I had some sites listed.
Okay, so the season for this is until October?
Yeah, basically until snowfall. So it could be built this fall and then used for the rest of the fall and. Uh, usage could begin again in the spring.
And when would it begin in the spring?
Yeah, it could, it could be put in next spring.
No, I said, when, when could it begin in the spring?
When could it begin? Usage could begin once snow melt.
Right, but the plan is for us to have our annual town meeting. In April. We haven't had that for the last two years as you're aware, Max. I, if we're going to take any vote on this tonight, it would need to be. The vote of reconsideration of the motion that was done on August second. And then a second motion. For anything that we wanted to do beyond. That reconsideration. One possible avenue here is to wait until the spring. To do any building of the track until after town meeting. So we know where we stand with monies. That could, that could be well known because the monies don't pass. At the fall town meeting for the, for the construction drawings, for the consultation for construction drawings. Or the monies don't pass at the spring, at the annual town meeting. So that. And in the interim, we could try and. Accommodate Max's request for alternate sites if this one is denied. So that's a path. But the first thing that would be necessary would be a vote to reconsider the motion. To go ahead that was done on August second.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
If, if, I, I wonder if Cheryl. Or Mike have any other thoughts they would like to share at this time regarding this?
What are you, what are you specifically looking for?
No, I just would like to hear, um. More from, give them more, another, more of an opportunity to say anything more they feel we should know. Before we potentially take a vote.
Well, I can speak, this is Cheryl and. I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like we have something against Mac, Max or, or bikes. And that is not the case. The Parks and Rec Committee is all about kids being recreational. And getting out and riding their bikes and doing all of that. So I think it's important to. Remember that and understand that. That is important. But it is also important to remember that the Parks and Rec Committee listened to Max. Heard his presentation, enjoyed it. I am not a resident. It is up to the residents to decide these things. And that's why we have a Parks and Rec Committee. It was put to the Parks and Rec Committee by the selectmen a couple of years ago to please listen and make a decision on this. The Parks and Rec Committee, residents of Manchester, your peers, all decided that this was not a priority. For space or for use of time, money, energy. And it's pretty insulting to them to think they did that and there was notice, no. And it's still left hanging here a couple of years later. So again, my coin is speaking on behalf of our chairperson, Sean Daly. But I think that might be a little bit of the important stuff that people need to understand. Mike or Muffin or Earl God, would anyone else from the committee like to?
No, I mean, I think that's, it's exactly, and one of the emphasis that. Uh, has been very important in with our committee over the years is that. Uh, anytime that anybody has presented something to do at Park and Rec. For, uh, the board to review, uh, what became very important to us is to have a plan, not only. Uh, beforehand, but afterwards, uh, who is going to maintain it? Uh, cause a lot of times these things all start great. Um, it gets done, then quickly dissipates and the town is left with it. Um, and so for us to forward a recommendation to the selectman, it was mandated to us. Uh, years ago that there should be some type of written plan. Of who is taking ownership, who is taking responsibility. And, um, we don't seem to have that. And I think what frustrated the board. Is that, you know, we discussed it, um, before you ladies meeting because there was rumors that this was back on the table. Um, and we were told it's not a, you know, it's nothing to worry about. You don't need to be at the meeting. Uh, and then all of a sudden we hear through the grapevine that this was approved. Um, without any, you know, consolation with the board. That over the years has spent hours and hours taking surveys, spending time with managers and stuff. And I don't recall a time where on the whim of a moment, the selectman had ever. Granted temporary use of recreational space. Um, at one meeting with our consultant with the Park and Rec Committee. So, and I'm just speaking for the committee and our general consensus out there is why even have a committee? Um, if the selectmen aren't gonna seek our input or, you know. Listen to what our thoughts are before making decisions.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky, I'm sorry.
Um, and, and what we just heard is what. I was looking for and, and that is, um. It is important for us to rely upon the recommendations of boards and committees. And, and their vast amount of time and work that they put into the boards and committees. Um, and I know you've said it's your responsibility for this having fallen to the crack. But I, I really think it was mine because I'm the one who brought this back to the board of selectmen. And, um, and. I certainly don't have the, um, knowledge or experience regarding. Fields and parks and rec. And I think it's important that we listen to what they recommend. If Max is willing to, as he said, um, wait on this. I, I think that, that. Would probably be the best thing to do. At this point. Thank you.
Okay, so. We have other things that we need to deal with as well tonight. I think it's important to be clear that even waiting. And I don't, I know you don't want to hear this, Max, but even waiting, that does not assure that there's going to be. Uh, acceptance of a proposal to do this in the spring. But I do think that it's too short a timeframe. To build up and take down. Given that. The study may be funded at the fall time meeting and construction may be funded at the annual time meeting. With those unassured things, but. Um, if there's going to be a delay beyond that. For any length of time, then I think that we would need to take this up again, as well as parks and recs would need to take it up again. So. I need a motion to reconsider.
Some of.
Second.
Excuse me, are we, are we reconsidering or are we rescinding our decision?
A motion to reconsider would be to, uh, take the decision that was made two weeks ago and say, we're not going forward with that decision. I, I don't, I don't know, Becky, it sounds, it sounds to me two, two ways of describing the same thing.
I do, but Greg is there. Would Greg have some perspective on how it should be worded?
Well, so you make, you make a motion to reconsider. If that passes, then someone makes a second motion. And that motion may say something to the effect that. The board votes to. To table this un- until a future time. And during that. During between now and that new time, alternatives might be pursued. Or the site may become available if other things don't materialize.
Does that clarify your question, Ann?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the first vote is a vote to reconsider. We have a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, Mr. Bowlin.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Bob Mitterer votes yes. Okay, um. I'd like to make a motion to. To table any further decision on. The location of the pump track at Pine Street until after the annual town meeting in the spring.
Is it the spring one or the fall one that we would be?
I, I would like to know both, the outcome of.
Okay.
The, uh, fall meetings. Study, study money and the spring meetings funding for construction. That's a motion that's on the floor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
With great ambivalence. Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Bowlin.
Yes.
Mr. Bob Mitterer votes yes. In the interim, Max. If you can, uh, secure support for oversight from bike and pad. Um, is that appropriate? Mr. Fennishbill.
Yes, that's, that's certainly a possibility.
Okay. We don't know where the site will be. This site is off the table until the spring. But, I. If there is, um. Willingness on the part of bike and pad to, uh, take oversight responsibilities for. A site where a pump track is. And I'd like to see something that was more, less temporary. I think it's got to be vetted by open space and recreation if you're talking about going out into the woods, um, for this. But those are some of the things that would need to be done between now and the spring when we are able to reconsider the Pine Street site or not. Okay. And again, Max, I want to reiterate what I said before. You've hung in there and you've hung in there with a lot of. A lot of different decisions being made. You've learned a hell of a lot about town government. And I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. I appreciate all your time and I'm sorry for any issues I caused to the. Parks and Recreation Committee or Department.
You didn't cause those. I think that that's my responsibility. Okay, so. We're gonna move on from there. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust interest in the DPW site. Greg, you wanna tee this one up?
Sure, thank you, Jeff. So you have heard in the past presentations from Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority. And just the Housing Authority about, um, plans that they are pursuing to. Upgrade the existing units that the Housing Authority has, as well as to expand those number of units. Um, and as part of a funding scheme to team up with a developer to do all of that. They have their eyes on the existing DPW site. Off of Pleasant Street and they would like to take the next step and put out an RFP to see if. There might be developers who'd be willing to put in proposals to do this work. But before they do that, they would like at least a sense of the community that. That the DPW site could be made available. And so they were thinking that it would be helpful to have. A non-binding vote at town meeting, uh, eyeing the fall town meeting coming up. Um, to ask voters if they would, um, be willing to entertain this concept. It wouldn't be a final approval. It would, as I say, just be a straw vote per se, a sense of the community. But it would help them as they advance, um, this concept and work with potential developers on, on the, on the concept. And so. The trust could, uh, could seek, you know, signatures of a hundred plus citizens to get a petition article on the. On the warrant for the fall town meeting. Obviously, it's a little easier. Um, if you were to do that on your own, but they would prefer that, uh, that you are supportive of. Of at least putting the article to, to the voters. They don't want to, um. Necessarily go through the petition process if, if you're opposed to it. Um, so their, their first avenue is through you to see if you would agree to put such an article on the warrant for the, for the fall town meeting.
Okay, any comments from the board?
If I may, Jeff.
Go ahead, Becky.
If we were to, I don't know if this is to Greg or you, but, but, um. If we were to go forward with a, a straw vote. What? What would be the specific? Question being posed? Now, i- if we're just talking general development of that area. Or or specifics, kind of think that it's. Pretty broad right now. And how? Would somebody? I don't know how they might feel they'd feel comfortable not really having some specifics. I wouldn't.
That's why this isn't a binding vote because we don't have the specifics, so it's a bit of a chicken or the egg syndrome here.
Right, right.
Trust is trying to get interest from developers to put forth proposals and to enhance. The viability. And to entice developers to get involved, I think they're looking for at least a sense of the community's willingness to entertain proposals. And so I members of the trust can can speak to this, I know that John's on. Muffin is on as well, maybe a few others. But in any case, it would be something along the line to know. Will the town a town meeting vote to endorse pursuing the concept of. Placing housing. On the DPW site and moving the DPW site to a new location. You know, that needs to be finessed, but that's that's the general concept.
Is is this something? Jeff, would this go through planning board as well?
So we have the bylaw that requires any. Formal reuse of town property to be reviewed by the planning board and the planning board expressing an opinion at town meeting. So. Judgment call as to whether a conceptual idea needs that approval, but it certainly doesn't hurt to have it.
Thank you. I think it would be.
This is the this is a plan that was presented in detail. At an Affordable Housing Trust meeting. Believe is at the end of June. At Memorial School. It was in public forum. And. Essentially. What they're looking for is. Does the town? Have an interest in. Entertaining proposals for. The development of the DPW, current DPW site. And there's obviously a lot of other things that dominoes that have to fall into place for that to occur. Like where the DPW is going. And how that will be funded. And. If that place should be the current compost site. Is the compost site moving to Pine Street? There are a lot of pieces in this big puzzle. What? My understanding is from going to the public hearing and listening to things that John has said subsequently. Regarding the Affordable Housing Trust is that. Without town support at the very basic level of are you going to entertain this idea? They they won't be able to go forward, they have to they have to figure out how they're going to proceed. If that's the case. With town support for the idea, certainly planning board would be involved and other boards would be involved. To. Bring this. Very important project to fruition. So that's, I can say that about it. Often, if you want to speak about this from the point of view of the Affordable Housing Trust, I don't know if John's on the call or not. John Foyback.
I am, Jeff.
You are. But you're slowly, you're only identified by an M, John, I'm only going to understand that as your wife's, you're on your wife's zone.
That's right, unmarried, so she's got the big capital M right there.
She's a capital M, all right, so. John, why don't you go ahead and add any comments that you have to make to what it is that you would think about being in this motion? We're not going to approve it tonight. But we need to understand, we have to have the written motion before we can make any approval. To Becky's point. And. Why don't you add anything else that you want to add to what I just said?
Yeah, that'd be great, John Foyback. Chairperson, Manchester Affordable Housing Trust, speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I'll go out on a limb and say perhaps even. On behalf of the Housing Authority, although I don't want to be so presumptuous, even though we are working as a team and I do see Gretchen here, our great ally and partner. Jeff and other. Board members. Our discussion. We sort of kicked it off when I'm looking at my notes. We had a presentation at the Board of Selectmen on May 17th where. We initiated or introduced some of the challenges to the plan to. Address Newport. The Plains loading place. And Pleasant Street and a couple of things I mentioned back in May is. We have to have a one to one. Match of new to existing units, state law, or at least certainly previous Department of Housing and Community Development demonstration projects that involve. That involve. New work on Housing Authority sites requires at least 100% match to the existing units. And working with our consultants, if you look at their quick density analysis, we don't get to that one to one. So the pleasant. Besides jumping out in the last two years as. In that community master plan as being. Seemingly appropriate and supported by town folks. So that being appropriate on that level, it also offers the opportunity for us to meet that one to one match by offering. And I think we looked at approximately 30 units that would get us past that, I think that 84 one to one unit match. And then secondly. Our consultant demonstrated that the. If we can have new development at the Pleasant Street site and have some arrangement where either by ground lease or by an operating agreement. That funds are flowing from that development. It could. Positively. Benefit. A plan to provide for financing on the rehab. That the rehab in and of itself with State Department of Housing Community Development support is insufficient. And it was our development planner or our consultants who said. Demonstrated that additional revenue derived from the Pleasant Street. Would be important, so I brought that up on the on the in June and then, yes, as you mentioned, we had the town meeting on June 29th. And we talked about that a little bit further and we also pushed the envelope a little further about to what extent can we have us a non-binding. Item on the town. At the town meeting, understanding that there's a lot of. Things in motion like what's what's going to happen to the site, where is DPW site going to go, there's a lot of intangibles there, but at least. To get a they take the temperature of the town, could we have a non-binding binding? Vote. Greg characterized it pretty good that, you know, it'd be conceptual, be a non-binding. Would the town be supportive of? Community affordable housing on a site or some form of housing on a site as part of a broader. Manchester Housing Authority and Manchester Affordable Housing Trust Plan. As we've talked about, but I think. We would also. Would suggest having something to the effect of. And the town would you agree to foregoing some revenue on the sale. Of that of the Pleasant Street site as part of the development to lower the cost of development. And whenever you lower the cost of development, you're increasing your. Chance of creating more. Community affordable housing, so that that would in essence be the reason why I believe having a second provision on the non-binding relative to revenue is important. You reduce the revenue, increase the likelihood of having more community housing or certainly having increasing the viability of the development. And then increasing the viability of having positive. Whether it's cash flow payments or a direct payment. To an entity that is responsible for rehabbing the Housing Authority. The current unit, so that in a nutshell is. It's a summary, Muffin, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I don't think so, John. Although we would. Leading up to a fall town meeting, were there to be a non-binding question? The Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority would. Absolutely embark on community outreach, we've been all along. Doing community outreach and we're working on surveys now to go out. In that continued effort, so. If we had a question at the fall town meeting, we'd be working very hard to educate people. Leading up to that town meeting.
Eli. Eli, I need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, sir. While back when we discussed this, we were waiting in part to find out how the compost site would play out. We think we have a little bit more clarity on that. What it comes down to ultimately is. We have asked the Affordable Housing Trust and. Various different groups to come up with some sort of plan regarding our affordable housing stock and. And. To deal with some of the housing. Some specific types of housing pressure issues in town. And then they now have a plan and in order to move forward with it, they need to have this. In order to move forward one way or the other, they need to have this this piece of information as well. I think. Some of the. Any reluctance I've had to put an article on the warrant has come around from are we ready for it? And what I'm hearing from the Affordable Housing Trust is they're saying, yes, we're ready for it now and we need it now. And and it comes down to this very basic question. Will we support housing there or not? And. We need to answer that question, so if the Affordable Housing Trust. And relevant groups are ready to ask that question of of town meeting, I think we should support it at this point. Because it's a problem that we know that we need to solve and. This is the current viable plan that we have to solve. And we know that without moving forward and trying to resolve this, we open ourselves to multiple different issues, obviously. So I think that we should at this point say, yes, we want to put this non-binding measure on. Fall town meetings, much as Alan doesn't like non-binding measures, I think. It's important information for us to find.
John?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Oops, which, John?
Actually, John Foyback had his hand up, I didn't know whether he wanted to respond to Eli.
Okay. Please.
John, go ahead, John.
Okay, sure, just a couple of points, obviously, it's the Affordable Housing Trust that's putting this forward and two points I think that have to be in here is that. This is about exploring ways to build affordable housing. And the other thing I think that needs to be at least mentioned, it's not clear now. Is that the town is probably going to, will have to participate in some way in that this is public land. And we need to participate in. Some solution somehow with that because that land is land that. You know, this this housing would be built on and the town has to, I'm not saying donate the land in total, but is certainly going to be a partner in all of this. So I mean, if I if I'm a taxpayer, I think I need to know those two things at a minimum.
John Foyback?
Yeah, the only follow up item I failed to mention, and I think hearing Eli. It got me thinking is that. With the. Results of the non-binding town vote. We could go forward with a request for proposal, yes, there's uncertainty about the ultimate. How it lands on a formal vote, but by we could have language in the development request for proposal where we're soliciting development responses. We could have language. Identifying. The work that the Housing Authority has done, the Affordable Housing Trust has done, we can cite their our meetings, we could cite our outreach, but we could furthermore say that. We had a. And we have at least some evidence of. Elementary support by way of a non-binding vote at the town meeting on X. We could go forward with that and we could. And reference that. One, to make it. Known that there's a possibility that that land would be available, we make that known to the applicant, possible applicants. But I think it also, it gives good, important. I wouldn't say green light, but certainly a. A feeling to an applicant that they're not just doing an academic exercise here, they're not going to respond to something and their proposal is going to sit up on some shelf, no. No, the Housing Authority, the Affordable Housing Trust, the town, we are serious. And we're looking for a responsible development entity to step in the shoes of. Of the of the plan that we have and to improve it and then to take the necessary steps to. Pursue financing and and finalize the land transaction. So that's one thing I wanted to add.
Okay, I need one point of clarification, Greg. This this. Measure. Does it need to be specific enough to say that the town would be leasing this land? Because I've heard purchased lease and other terms thrown around. And. I don't want to put town meeting. In a position. Where. It's vague. What? The town side of the structure of this deal is. I understand the Affordable Housing Trust is part of the town. But. Do we need to have it as specific? In the measure. To entertain. The possibility of a lease of this land for the purposes of. Expanded. Affordable housing and rehabilitation of existing affordable houses.
Well. You know, the more specificity that you can provide, the cleaner it is for the voters. I think if you're entertaining a lease, it needs to be a minimum of a 99 year lease, you're not going to get a developer. Wanting to, or you're not going to get buyers. To buy a home or rent a home if it's. If it's not for a very long period of time. So. Ask your question.
Do we have to sort out lease versus purchase versus give tonight?
No, you don't.
Could I could I also add that I? Go ahead, Jeff.
Eli, it depends on the form of the motion, if the motion is. It's the consensus of the board to support. A non-binding. Article at town meeting, fall town meeting. That's one thing. I'm not willing to give that support without seeing the actual motion. And the motion hasn't been written. So I'm asking that question. in terms of the information that's going to be needed by the Affordable Housing Trust to write the motion. How specific does it need to be? So that's my that's my rationale. You can tell me from your experience, Eli, whether that's
Yeah, you're right. To be most efficient, if we want them to go off and actually write something that they with which will acquire the minimum number of iterations, then we need to provide a little bit of detail.
Just I'm just talking about parameters. I'm not talking about hammering it out in this meeting. I don't want to do that. So we could give a vote that says we're in support of this idea. Final approval will come when we we have a motion before us to vote on. And we don't have to go any further than that. And we could appoint a couple of members of the board to work with the Affordable Housing Trust to fashion the motion.
Hey, Jeff.
Let me let me make sure I've got my board.
I'm sorry.
Is that is that?
If I may, I would
What's the motion that we're going to vote on tonight is my question?
That the Board of Selectmen endorses the concept of a nonbinding vote at the Fall Town Meeting. Asking the town for its interest in a package of development that includes the Pine Street DPW site.
Is that motion?
Isn't that the Pleasant Street DPW site?
Yes, it is. But
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that a motion?
The streets confused. Sure.
That's okay. Is that a motion?
I, yes, I think, yes, that is a motion. I move that the board agree that to support the concept of a warrant article for the Fall Town Meeting, asking the town to consider a development project that includes the Pleasant Street DPW site and the current housing, Housing Trust and
Housing Authority, Housing Authorities.
Housing Authority properties.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Before I second, may I ask if that
No, I need a second because there's a motion on the floor.
Yes. Second.
Okay, Becky, now you want to discuss that motion. Let's do this as quickly as we can.
Okay, I'm just curious if this what 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 Anne proposed and I seconded is what the Housing Trust is actually looking for.
John?
Yeah, thank you. Two things came to mind. One is I appreciate the attention to the details, but I like how the conversation swung back to let's first agree to the concept and getting some form of a a motion as Anne suggested. So I think that that's really good. And the second thing that came to mind was I'd hate to tie our hands and we lose flexibility with language regarding a lease. If we were to, and I think we could work this out before the actual town vote, but we could work out a language where where it could could involve the lease or sale of something that at least puts out the options to
That's 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 further in, we've agreed, that's further into the weeds that we want to get through tonight. And before you get the full support of the board for the for the article to go on to the town warrant, you have to come back to us with a written article.
Sounds great.
Okay. Is the board comfortable enough with the support of the concept to vote on Anne's motion?
Yep.
Okay, so let's do let's do a voice voice vote. John Rupp?
Yes.
Becky James?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbit Turner votes yes. So, John, what you have from us is that we like the idea, but we're not giving you full approval for this. So you still aren't off the hook for 100 signatures until we see the actual motion. So we need to get a motion. It's going to go on the warrant, a warrant article that's going to go on to the warrant. And then we can vote on that. Does that make sense to you?
Just to clarify that so that I hear this correctly and perhaps Greg as well. That motion has been approved to endorse the concept, but the responsibility of drafting language would rest with us. And then we would share it with you for final approval or working out kinks prior to final approval.
Would you like a Board of Selectmen member to join you?
We can certainly draft that, but if you're suggesting someone who we could use as sort of like a focus group or a contact who could review that, that'd be lovely.
Is there a Board of Selectmen member who's willing to take that role?
Sure, but I was going to suggest that we have Muffin Dewiskel as our designated to the Affordable Housing Trust. Maybe the better method might be just to say that while they're going through this process, that Muffin just increases her frequency of contact with Greg and maybe you.
Okay, I agree. We don't we don't need to go beyond that. Muffins are designated from the board. I know she knows how to reach you. Okay.
Looking good.
All right, John?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all the work that the Affordable Housing Trust is doing. Navigating this very challenging task. We have a list on COVID update. Greg, do you want to comment on that?
I'm sure. And we also have members of Board of Health with us this evening. So as you know, the Delta variant continues to be a concern. We have seen an uptick in cases in town, not dramatic and overly alarming, but nonetheless, more cases. We continue to have our vaccination rate inch forward. We're we're probably at if we're not at the 80% fully vaccinated, we're very close to that. Nonetheless, you know, all of Massachusetts is considered at a high or significant risk because of the number of new cases. Communities are contemplating and some already have imposed re-imposed various restrictions, primarily some have imposed mask wearing in public indoor public spaces, whether it be businesses or public buildings of one sort or another. Other, a few other places have required that those only those who are vaccinated can be in restaurants and bars since you can't keep a mask on when you're eating or drinking. So the the question that is before us is whether or not we feel we need to pursue some of those additional restrictions in town to make sure that we keep our rates very low. And is that a prudent measure to take as a preemptive strike so that we don't see any further increase in in cases in town? The corollary or additional issue is the question of if we do feel a need to put additional restrictions in place, does that revisit the issue of outdoor dining in parking spaces? You currently are allowing outdoor dining on the sidewalks. A few places continue to do that. But right now, the state has not asked for restaurants to restrict their capacity indoors. So perhaps that it's not time to do that. But it is something that is starting to be talked about around town and people are starting to ask the question. So we have scheduled a joint meeting with the Board of Health for this coming Thursday at 8:30 in the morning to to further this discussion with with the board, but you can have some preliminary discussions this evening.
Jeff, if you're looking for board comments?
I am looking for board comments.
All right. Mind if I go first?
I don't mind. Go ahead.
All right. So as far as masking indoors is concerned, I know a number of people who think continue to think this is a good idea. I see increasing numbers of people who are feeling concerned about it and doing it of their own volition. I don't have any particular objection to if we decide for town properties to enforce that requirement. It's it's not overly burdensome. It's I don't see a problem with that person. As far as sidewalk dining is concerned, I have Okay, so here's the thing. I know that people have been commenting on sidewalk dining and the absence of sidewalk, or rather, the parking spaces used for dining. From two different angles. One, there's a group of people who liked it and were unhappy that went away. And there are some people who advocated for it coming back on a more permanent basis. And when that was suggested or discussed, and one point we discussed it with a Cape and Cape Ann Chamber meeting. I know that I told the Cape Ann Chamber folks that and the local folks and the business leaders, that if that was going to come forth, it really would mean it need to be a proposal that was driven by the businesses forward. Because in the past, whenever we've done that, there's been a lot of controversy over parking. And so I thought that in order to avoid the tension of whipsawing back and forth on it, it would have to be a well-formed proposal coming from the the business leaders. So the current request for expanding parking, the use of parking for outdoor dining, I think it's coming from from is a twofold thing. One is that there's a bunch of residents who really want it. But the other is is there's some residents who feel like it would be a public health benefit to have the outdoor dining. And I know that some members of the Board of Health said that as well. So here's my concern. When we originally put the the sidewalk dining, the outdoor, the parking space dining in place, it was in response to need to try and help the businesses who were restricted with respect to how many people they could have indoors. So the restaurants were really crushed, a lot of local businesses were. Restaurants couldn't have more than a certain number of people that was their bread and butter indoors. And so we put in the place the parking lot, parking space dining to help them survive that and to improve the public health outcomes for people when we didn't have vaccines. So if we do that now, if we go back and we expand the the outdoor dining, thinking that it's going to improve things from a public health standpoint. To my mind, I wonder if that will only actually work if there is a commensurate reduction in the number of spaces inside the restaurants that are being used. If we add outside, if we add the parking spaces and add seats out there and the restaurants are still full, then from a public health standpoint, if the thing that we're trying to address is the public health safety, if those restaurants are still full, then I don't think we've actually done that. I don't think we've actually helped public safety. We've provided an option for people who are concerned about their their health. But we have not actually taken an action which will demonstrably improve the public health, because inside those restaurants, there is still a density which is the concern of the residents proposing that we expand public dining. So I think I need to see how we're going to deal with the insides of restaurants and restrictions if we are also thinking about expanding to dining to the public and parking spaces again. There's right now, what we have from a management standpoint is we have some people irritated and complaining because we have not expanded the public dining in the parking spaces and we took it, it took it away. We don't have clear evidence that we have increasing infection rates because of the restaurants in town, not as far as I know. And I know that if we do put in place the parking lot, the parking space dining again, we will have a bunch of management issues. We're going to have the same ones we had before. We're going to have public safety issues. We're going to have complaints. We're going to have ADA issues on the sidewalks. We will have a bunch of problems we're going to have to deal with. So I'm not on board right now with the notion of expanding the outdoor dining to parking spaces again, unless somebody can convince me from an epidemiological standpoint that it's actually going to do something.
Thank you, Eli. That was very well articulated. Any other board members want to make a comment?
Would would we be addressing Eli's concerns if we also require that or required that people who want to dine in or drink indoors be vaccinated?
That becomes a tricky a tricky requirement. One is how that gets enforced. Two is whether that applies also to retail businesses that aren't restaurants. And three is three is is that's not part of the the current state COVID guidelines, and we would be going beyond the state COVID.
If I can clarify the second point, I think it was the second.
The second point was about other retail businesses.
Yes, exactly. The reason for suggesting only restaurants and bars is that those are locations where people are in close contact with each other for an extended period of time. At the grocery store, basically, you're in and out. And and you don't stand for 10 or 15 minutes talking with checkout clerk under most circumstances. So that's why I was suggesting it just for for restaurants and bars.
Okay.
Question, Jeff? Have Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Have we heard from any of the restaurants and bars, well, restaurants really in town about this? I'm not sure where their clientele is on all of this. When we rolled up the streets, I guess there were some that were they were okay with it. And there were others that were not. I wonder if they've been getting feedback from their clientele on this one way or the other.
I
And Greg?
Greg, have you heard anything from the restaurants whatsoever?
We haven't really heard from them of late, no.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So that's the general answer to your question and I I'm uncomfortable with this is what our clients are saying to us. This is what our customers are saying to us coming from the restaurants. I would prefer to hear from them from the point of view of what the impact of the surge in Manchester by the Sea is having on their business.
Well, as as Eli articulated, it's it's kind of difficult to know where the motivations are from folks who 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 want to do this or don't want to do this, whether it's you know, a personal need, or is it overall concern on public health? Or is it they like dining outside? I mean, it's 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 kind of tough to know Or is it uh they like dining outside? I mean, it's 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 kind of tough to know what the story is. Because all of these issues are mixed together here.
Yep. Any other board members want to make a comment? Martin, I see your hand. I'll be with you in a moment.
If I may, Jeff?
Go ahead, Becky.
Uh, I was just going to say, I would like to hear from Board of Health, and I know we are meeting with them on Thursday. But I I. I am very reluctant to go. Way beyond what um. The state and the CDC are recommending at this time. But I'd like to hear what Board of Health feels.
Okay, um, I don't want to turn this into a joint meeting. Um, is there anybody else from the Board of Health besides? Um, Dr. Han and uh the Chair Paula Polophilius that's in this meeting?
Yeah, there are.
Okay, that.
Joan Klafler, I'm on the board.
Okay, thank you, Joan. That's that's right. I didn't see you tonight. I'm concerned about opening this up to input from the Board of Health and being in violation of open meeting law.
Long as they're speaking as individuals and they're not taking a position as a board, not deliberating as a board, they they can give their individual input. And not violate formal.
Yeah.
And Jeff, if I may?
Becky?
I'm I'm happy to wait for Thursday. We we have a joint meeting. I'm just saying that what I'm, I would personally like. Okay, thank you.
I understand that you you you're interested in what input the Board may make, Board of Health may make. From an epidemiological point of view.
Okay. Can I, can I make one more comment? Um. Despite having brought up the vaccination certificate issue, what I was hoping to hear back was that's a completely unmanageable thing. Those people who have articulated the suggestion that 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 we wait for um state or CDC guidance. Before we make rules locally is certainly my my position.
Well, one item on the agenda for our Thursday meeting is a review of the uh state and CDC guidance at this time. Paula, is that correct?
Hi, this is Paula Polophilius. Yes, of course, and. I had raised my hand to just inform people at this time in town. We have four active cases of COVID and as of tomorrow, that number will reduce to three. I would like to just say that I don't think we should overreact right now. Based on our numbers and what's been happening in town.
And and my understanding, Paula, is that the those numbers were uh up to five as of. Last Thursday. And now you're saying that they've dropped to four and. That one of those four will be dropping off the list tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Martin, would you uh like to make a comment without getting into? The potential issues for open meeting law here?
Sure, absolutely. It's Martin Han. Uh, I'm going to put two hats on, one as a resident of the town. And the other one as a medical professional. And I'm going to leave my Board of Health hat outside as much as I can. And probably not going to be as organized in my thoughts as Eli. That was a very nice uh summary of comments he made. Uh, I think, you know, as as was already discussed, there there's clearly a couple different situations here. As a town resident, I've heard from many people and from restaurants, and I I think a formal survey would be really useful to solve this. That a lot of residents feel more outdoor dining options would be really nice. And they feel that a lot of people are bypassing the town, going somewhere else for outdoor dining because it is much more available. And during the summer and fall, irrespective of COVID and the pandemic and the resurgence and what have you. It's nice to have dining outdoors. Parking issues would need to be addressed and so on and so forth. I totally get that. So I think there's a, there's a clear sentiment in town and a lot of people that I've talked to. Uh regarding this, and I think a formal survey handed to the restaurants and maybe to people, patrons of the restaurants would be helpful to. To get some data to base decisions on. Um, as a physician, I can also comment on Anne's question regarding the vaccination. That should not be delineator because even the vaccinated people uh with regard to Delta variant. Can be or will be a conduit. They are just as infectious based on data on their viral loads. As unvaccinated people in in passing infection along to other people that could be more vulnerable. May it be that they that they are immunosuppressed or children not vaccinated. Or have been vaccinated early on uh when the vaccines became available and the vaccines are now waning in their efficacy. As there are already some studies that show that that is starting to happen. And that's why boosters are being discussed. So vaccination alone is not going to be a good protection. Masks, on the other hand, could be a much better protection indoors in crowded spaces. Irrespective of what we're discussing now with the restaurant. So that's certainly something um you can put into the considerations. And um. You know, aside from the benefit that outdoor dining could bring in terms of vulnerable people choosing to dine outdoors. As long as weather permits, rather than going inside where it is potentially more crowded. People that feel more safe and are not elderly or uh. You know, they they can still go inside, depending if we feel as a town that we're still uh safe. From a COVID point of view, but people that are vulnerable or visiting town don't know the situation here. They would feel more comfortable sitting outside and dining if there are options. But that's, you know, up for discussion. And and again, I'm not wearing my Board of Health hat and I'll talk to you on Thursday about all that other stuff.
Okay, thank you, man.
Jeff, on the, one observation on the masking item, um I I did notice, for example, that up in Rockport now, they have. The um portable road signs like we use to announce uh.
Yes.
Iden fleshing. And up there, they the the signs, at least this weekend, said masks are strongly advised. Indoors. Businesses. So this this is across the board in town. They had those in the center of town, basically telling everybody they strongly advise that people mask up indoors.
Okay. Okay, um. I'd like to move on with our agenda. Uh, we will revisit this on Thursday morning at eight thirty in a joint meeting with the Board of Health. Which has been posted by both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. So we look forward to seeing. The committee uh members of the Board of Health on Thursday morning. Okay. Our consent agenda, um we have our meeting minutes. We have a uh request for um a license for um. An event license for Half Marathon by the Sea. The Merit's Lease Renewal Agreement, uh request to disband. MEAP, which is the Electrical Efficiency Group. That was requested by MEAP. Having finished their charge. And a request to waive potential conflict of interest for Tom Connison. Any comments on the consent agenda?
I would like to pull out the um number four regarding MEAP.
Okay. Any other items in the consent agenda that people have questions about? Um, I want to, I want to just comment on the uh. Half Marathon. This is a repeat event for town. It does involve six hundred participants. Uh potentially six hundred participants. And I think they said fifteen to twenty border bodies at Memorial School. It's been managed in the past without much difficulty. I think that I would put a condition on approving that in the consent agenda. That um we get a sign off by, they've requested uh an ambulance. And I don't know whether they're providing the ambulance or um the town of Manchester's providing the ambulance. Greg, do you know the answer to that?
Typically, if they if they request it, then they do provide it. I can double check.
That that the organization's providing.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we need to have those things uh double checked, but we could give consent to. The uh them going forward since the event's occurring in about a month. With those checks, public safety checks, the ambulance check and. Those are the two. So um Becky, you wanted to pull out MEAP. Can we get a motion to uh vote on the rest of the consent agenda other than MEAP?
Some of.
I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Second from John Round. And uh let's do a quick go around. Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
And Mr. Barterturn votes yes. Um, go ahead, Becky.
Um, I just, I just um would like to hear from the committee as a whole. And know if it's consensus that they feel they should be disbanded. Or if it is something coming just from the chair.
My understanding is that they voted as a committee to disband themselves.
Okay. Even though they have some who don't feel it should be.
Well, if it's a majority vote of the committee.
Absolutely. Okay, if it is a majority vote, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, Greg, is that your understanding as well?
I I believe so. I I know that they have struggled to get a quorum the last few times. So I don't know if if they've had a formal vote to that effect. So I know that the members who have attended the majority have said we should disband. I don't know if that's a a true formal majority vote.
Would you like to have that held over until our next meeting, Becky? Do you have a clarification on that?
I I would.
Okay, um then we we will not. Move to uh support the disbandment of the Manchester Energy Efficiency Advisory Committee.
We'll get more information for you next time.
Thank you. Uh, in correspondence, we have a letter to Mass Housing from Senator Tar and Senator Hill. We have a memo from Chief Fitzgerald regarding the donation of office chairs and supplies. And we have a letter for new flight paths over Manchester by the Sea. By Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, so just a a quick update on the the walkway between the town hall parking lot and getting over to Beach Street. Working with the manager of the property there, I've been told that we should expect to see a document that we can all sign at the end of this week. We have been able to secure um insurance coverage, liability coverage through our current coverage. They will list the property as an additionally insured, um so that that should help. And um we did have a bit of a trial run. It was opened over the on the Saturday with Festival of the Sea and and seemed to work quite well. And was well received and there were really no complaints about its use. So um. Well, we've been a little delayed here for its its continual use. Uh, I think we're, we'll be there shortly. And I think it'll be a good asset uh for many years to come. In terms of um, in terms of the Downtown Improvement Committee, they are anxious to move forward with. Uh with some Phase Two design work, Phase Two being a continuation of sidewalk and lighting improvements. Um along Union and Central Streets, um coming around the corner here and also further down Beach to Tappan. And perhaps the further up Summer Street towards the cemetery there. So they would be interested in having um access to some of our um ARPA money. The American Recovery Plan Act um to do uh some preliminary design work and cost estimating work. With the hopes that that would um put us in a good position to then apply for new infrastructure funds. That um that may be coming down the pike from the feds. There's certainly a lot of um activity in in DC these days on infrastructure funding. And uh it could be an opportune time to tap into some of that. So at 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 a future meeting, we may have you give formal approval to that question of using the ARPA funds for that. We'd like to put together some projections of ARPA monies and how they might be used, and this could be one of them. So stay tuned for there. Uh, just a quick update on the compost project. We are waiting to hear back from Black Earth as they. Give us a marked up version of the proposed contract. We had a contract in the RP. They had a few areas where they wanted to propose some alternate language. We're waiting for that language and we'll review it with council and do a final um sit down with with Black Earth to go over. Hopefully mutually agreeable language. And then our goal is to have that final contract before you. Hopefully at your earlier September meeting, but certainly by your second September meeting at the latest. Moving on, uh noted that we finally have the appraisal back on the Mason Building. As you know, the Masons have um approached us. To see if we would be interested in in purchasing the building. They are interested in retaining ownership of 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 some of the land and basically making a condominium project where they could. Build a smaller uh facility for them and the town could have the larger existing structure. And that we could renovate and turn it to a senior center and um meeting rooms for for evening meetings, et cetera. So I think it's now that we have that appraisal, I think it's time to reach out to them. And see if we can sit down and and see if we can strike a deal. And so um I recommend that we do this and one or two of you. Perhaps work with me and and Nancy Hammond, Council on Aging Director, uh to work work on those negotiations. And then finally, finally, my last note was um. Nice collaborative effort, uh again with Council on Aging, just continuing with that thing for a minute. Uh, working with um some of our KPM neighbors on a walking challenge that will start this September and go through October. Um, they put together a very nice booklet um describing different loops and and encouraging people to. To do more walking, to get outside and do do some walking, tracking the the progress people make and various prizes that can be. Uh obtained um by by doing various uh loops and mileages. It's a nice tie-in also with the longevity bench, which will have a walking event that's also planned for for the fall. So those are the items I I wanted to go over with you.
Hey Jeff? Can I ask you a quick questions?
Yes, Eli.
I want to actually just comment on Dipface Two. One of the first questions that's going to come up for me with if and when that comes back because of proposals to what extent that's going to interface with or, or, or be involved with or come up against the Central Street Culver project. I don't need an answer to that now. I just, I'll just know that's going to be one of the first questions I have. Second, on the correspondence section, the letter that we got regarding Flight Pass, is there any concern of timeliness that we have to deal with there?
Yes, I'm not fully up to speed on, on the process that they're undertaking. I need to do a little more homework there. I believe they are targeting hearings this fall, but I don't know when final decisions are, are to be made. I need to do, need to do a little more homework on that. But as I indicated, that it may warrant you, they warrant having that as an agenda item in, in the relatively near future.
Thank you.
Greg, I'm, I'm concerned about the public walkway item that you presented. That you're asking for either us to give you authorization to go ahead and sign off on this or or the board to give me authorization to sign off on this. And I'm, I'm really concerned about entering into any agreement without having the board members see what the agreement is and, and review it. And that would mean having to postpone this unfortunately to September eighth. Unless we want to have a
You could have a special meeting.
Well, we still no, we don't have time to post for a meeting after the joint board meeting with Board of Health.
Well, actually, we do. We could, you could, you could meet at, I don't know what time you want to say. But we could post it tomorrow morning by nine o'clock and you could, you could meet at
Nine o'clock?
Nine thirty. After, after the Board of Health meeting.
Will we have the agreement by then?
I don't know for sure. I hope so, but I can't guarantee it.
Post it and we can always jank it out.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and post for I, I know we have to give a specific time, so nine thirty. I, I don't know. I, I'm asking for board members in terms of their availability to meet after the Board of Health meeting. And who knows how long that's going to go.
That's what I was just going to ask. How long do we think that would go?
I think an hour is a reasonable reasonable assumption.
I can't hear you, Greg.
Sorry, I think an hour is a reasonable reasonable assumption. I think nine thirty should, you know, is as good a guess as any.
And the board members available at nine thirty? It would have to be executive session.
I can make that work.
Okay.
I'll just go to work a little later.
Sorry, Becky. I, I'm just
No, if it works.
More than a little frustrated with how slowly that response came from Mr. Brown. Okay, so let's go ahead and post for nine thirty, Greg, and and I'm correct in assuming that that has to be an executive session.
Yeah, you, you would ideally, if it's available, after your deliberation, you could come out of the executive session and approve it.
Okay. All right. That completes our agenda. Are there any other matters that were not reasonably anticipated by the chair? That was one of them. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Missing.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
There she is.
I don't know whether I'm still here or not. But yes.
Are you slowing your voice down purposely or is that your answer? Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
The, the Mount Desert Island Historical Society is beginning to get tired of me.
Never.
Yes, adjourn, please.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Turn of votes, yes. Thank you very much for all your work to get this to happen tonight. Good night, folks.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.